Okay.
This is a big one right here, right? I did, Todd said it was.
Well, that was hard.
Okay, for the record, this is the Stark County Council meeting Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. We are present in forum. Um, first order of business before we get started on the agenda, I have some housekeeping items here. I have before me the minutes from November twentieth. I'm looking for a motion on those.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion from Todd, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I also have before me a corrected, uh, um, set of minutes showing December eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Would somebody like to make a motion about those?
I'll make the motion that we accept the correct notes.
Todd, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Also seconded by Kay, all those in favor, aye.
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 Is there any opposed? We shall move right into reorganization, um, starting on the front of the sheet. Um, the first thing that comes up, the county council president, would somebody like to make a motion for county council?
I move for Dave Pierman to continue as a board program.
We have a motion from Bruce for Dave Termer, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kay, is there any other motions on the floor? Um, I'll ask all those in favor of Dave Termer to say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you. Um, and then next is the vice president currently held by Kay.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion for Todd. Are there any other, um, motions on the floor? I'll ask all those in favor for Todd, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed?
Um, thank you.
I think it was Bruce.
Bruce, yeah. And then, uh, county attorneys up? No, right, three-year contract, right? What about what you asked about? The Economic Development Foundation is the next one. Um, Kay and I have been serving on that. I, it's only my first year. I'd like to remain unless somebody else wants to beat the door down for it. All right, we can group through those, I believe.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, if nobody else is gonna think of that, no, at least it's no more. We have a motion from Bruce, is there a second? I'll second. Uh, I have a second from Todd, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We had Bruce Bennett for the skill.
I'd like to stay on that.
I'll make that motion that we keep Bruce on. Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Um, is there any other nominations? All those in favor for Bruce, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Um, we had Kirk C for Cassie. Um, is that something you've been enjoying doing? Would you like to continue with it?
Not particularly.
I started out when I was on the council with Kirk C, a couple of years. Somebody else would like to do it?
I mean.
It has to do, it, it, it's very important.
Is it once a month?
On a day to only, yes, once.
Have a nomination for Tony. Kay, is there a second?
Hey, you know what, Bruce is.
Would you like to something?
Yeah, I, I'd be glad.
All those in favor for Tony, please say aye.
Aye.
That's fine. No, 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 that's fine. Uh, you'll do it, I, but it's important.
No, I, I didn't just say it was important. I didn't say he wanted to do it.
No, Bruce Watson. No, I didn't, I don't, it's not that I want it, but it's so important.
Yeah.
But I think.
Hey, we're like, hey, Dave, why's like, um, him do it, come here, we got a.
We really, if not me, we need to point a farmer.
Whoever does it, these are the meetings.
Okay, since, since Tony is not wanting to do it, Bruce, are you saying you would do it?
I will do it.
Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I make the motion.
Not have Tony.
Oh.
And to, and to have Bruce.
Um, is that a problem with me being on the skill board too?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because I'd like to get that to Tony.
I make a motion that we appoint Bruce Bennett to represent the Kirk C board.
We have a motion for Bruce.
In place of Tony.
In place of Tony. A second from Tony, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? And then we have Howard Bailey on, um, planning commission. Which I attended the planning commission meeting the other night, and if, if, um, Howard's willing to take it, it takes a while to get in the groove and that. I think Howard's doing a good job.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I will serve at the pleasure of the board.
You said absolutely first, Bruce, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
And then Todd?
I will second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Um, our, our alcoholic beverage appointment was going reds, um. Do we have a letter from Glenn saying she wants to continue that?
Yeah.
Or I know one's here too.
I also have one. Uh, one and then repeatable, I have Michelle Downs too.
Ah, good, okay. You would get them, um, but one's willing, one's willing to, willing to continue with that. Would somebody like to make a motion?
No, I'll make a motion for Glenn, when she wants.
I'll second that, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Um, solid waste board, Todd, still good on that?
Yeah, I'll stay on that. That's fine, if somebody else wants to. It's a trashy job.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we retain Todd Lineball on the, on the solid waste boards.
I have a motion, uh, from Howard, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Kay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Um, while we're on Todd, I did have to make a suggestion to the council that we also, I mean, since we had the issue, um, recently with the issue at the highway department. I don't know that it has to be official and a motion and everything like that, but, um, I, I think as far as like, you know, like, we, in the past, we've appointed committees and different things for council people, just to kind of be their thing. I mean, Tony spends a lot more time, for example, at the jail. I'd like to just make a recommendation to the council that Todd be our liaison with the highway department, so that way you don't know more. Did we do that last?
Yeah, you did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I didn't know that we actually. Okay. Um, we have a letter from Michelle Downs for the PETA Bowl Board, um, it's great that she's willing to keep it. Um, would somebody like to motion?
I make a motion that we retain Michelle Downs for the PETA Bowl Board.
We have a motion from Howard, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Todd, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing was Tony um, took my spot on the Marshall Stark Development Board. Um, since you're just starting, are you willing to take that or?
Oh, yeah, I know, I'm going, yeah. Okay, I'll stay with them.
I'll move, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Bruce, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? That was Howard on the second. And that's it on our list.
Definitely, can I ask representative of the committee? I think that's the thing, I'm removing myself and Kirk's, you know who the meetings are during the day.
What about?
And certain days amongst, um, I will have. Um, I think we already have all the dates kind of planned out, so.
Um, what is?
We need a motion.
But you'll put them on this list, just so we know that.
Yeah, it's, uh, same committee, even under, but. But I think it's a good idea to have.
Don't be trying to get her to spend money.
I think money is, you know.
Okay, the next thing was the community foundation. Updates.
All right. Thanks for giving us a chance to come and talk to you guys again. Good afternoon, and just pass around a little bit of a description of, uh, wellness committee that we're looking to establish. Good to see everybody. Um, and Dave, I don't know if you wanted to talk about anything that like was previously discussed, or I can just kick things off, but, um.
I'm still your founder, but I'll, I'll speak to it too.
Okay, um, so we went before the commissioners this morning and had the same discussion, um, so essentially, just since there's a lot of discussions happening right now with community health and wellness and different funding for that, um, we just felt that it was like an opportune moment to start a health committee that would consist of experts from various health, um, care fields and, uh, representation from county government. Um, so right now, the community foundation does have a community wellness fund that has, you know, some funding in it that we're looking to um, establish this, this committee for in order to give officials, eh, like the opportunity to see how the granting process works and then also get the insight from the officials, um, who are in the healthcare field, who can help drive those decisions and identify different programs and projects that are already happening, um, within that field. So that's kind of the gist of, of what this committee would be, and we're looking from the council just for representation and um, we have Dave as the, as you just mentioned, you're also an economic development foundation, uh, representative for um, the council, so that we kind of have you wearing gold hats, um, on our breakdown, but, um, the people that we were looking to include would be an active county physician, the county health nurse, um, a hospital board representative, somebody who would be a representative of the federally qualified health centers, so, uh, we have somebody from Health Link to that. Uh, somebody from the mental health and recovery, uh, sector, and then a court representative, and then a commissioner, and council member, and then representation from the community foundations. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or like I said, if you wanted to kind of elaborate about the discussions that we had.
So let me give you an idea where this kind of spins out too, because I've spoken to members of the council and the commissioners also, we've been talking as well about the Save the Hospital Fund. I probably have been one of the people that's been boisterous just about being a little bit nervous about what we do with it, and so that's where some of this came to, was like, hey, let's talk about this, you know, um. And so I, I actually had some questions myself. I've talked to a couple of people about it on the council, and then I mentioned it even to Rachel, just like I feel like that money is there to help the community, and I feel like we're in a crisis now. And so that's why last time I motioned the table, or when we talked, it might have been before last, but motioned the table, basically what we do with those Save the Hospital funds, because I think it's important. Um, you know, we do do something with them that helps people, but we've had, we have people overdosing now, we have people that are unwell. Um, in parallel, we have this Health First Initiative that the commissioners opted into, that's going to be a huge help to the community, so there's an opportunity, um. Um, you know, I've also, you know, spoken before about, you know, of how we need space for, you know, people to expand, like Health Link, you know, all these, all these things that we have possibilities and not, not space for, you know, things like that, so um, when we met together, I thought that would be a great start, like, not just like ultimately, I know that the goal is that, you know, speaking about maybe even like bringing over half of that money out, be able to be spent for, you know, and obviously administering it, it makes a lot of sense to work with community foundation, that's their thing. Um, but deciding how to do it, why don't we partner together? And so that's how this spun out, which from that discussion of a partnership, community foundation, stakeholders from the community, people from the community, and, you know, developing, developing that, and so that's where we came up with this, was in that meeting.
Yeah, and I, and I feel like something that, like, is kind of on this description page too, is that the committee would be responsible, so, so will the community foundation staff will establish an, like, a, an application that would be eligible, like, where organizations can apply for funding, but that will be guided by discussions from experts in the field who can say like, well, these are the categories where this is where, you know, support is needed, and it'll just kind of help, uh, highlight those areas and make sure you know, everybody's on the same page and moving in the same direction, and like you mentioned, with the Health First funding that's coming, it's like, that's coming right now, but just like looking down the line of how that can be a sustainable um, county partnership that just continues for years to come.
And this committee can really guide that, you know, like, that, that, they could serve many different roles as far as the future for healthcare, you know, from that, so.
So, yeah, so it seems like a good first step to take, getting everybody at the same table, having the same discussion. Um, and so that's why, you know, we just wanna, we wanna keep this discussion and this conversation happening and uh, kind of moving forward with some action steps, and it seemed like this was a good first step to take, so.
Great idea. In fact, it just so happened, the same day I saw Don and, um, Mark, and just kind of started to talk to them a little about it right away, and we were at the, the courthouse, um, looking at the renovation and the things that were going on, but it's, we have a real opportunity right now in Stark County to really just like have a kind of a leapfrog change in, in the way that, you know, the health of our county, you know, through all these different things that are going on, and so I think that momentum is important to keep going.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have tonight, or my contact information is on here, if you ever want to reach out and have any other questions, um, obviously, we'll keep everybody in the loop as this develops, and as we get the committee established, and, um, you know, once that starts rolling, and um, just appreciate the opportunity to come and continue having this discussion with everybody. And. Um, so, yeah, but I mean, that's all the information that I have to present today, and like I said, uh, we had Dave Down as the recommended, uh, county council member, just because he also, you know, is a representative through the Economic Development Foundation, is the president, so, um, that's, that's sort of where that reasoning was, and has a lot of great insight to provide on healthcare in the community, so.
But it's not just limited to healthcare, right?
For this, for this fund, it would be.
This particular fund?
Like health and wellness, yes, 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 it would specifically, the, the, uh, the way that it's created, this fund, um, I kind of provided that description, it's to provide support to charitable and charitable public health organizations and programs, and strength, strengthen and.
So it would be limited to the health?
Yep, so even though the community foundation does other grant funding, that's with funds that come from our community funds, this is specific to wellness and.
Okay, this, this still had, just, just so, you know, um, you know, I'd make this clear too, though, it still has a parallel with the Save the Hospital Fund, feel like this group, this committee would help suggest what the best thing is to do with those funds too.
Yes.
The idea.
That's, so this, this doesn't have to do with the, uh, donation they were requesting before of the entire Save the Hospital Fund? No, no, these are funds that we already have, so we have some, like, the, uh, the average grant coming out of this is about eight hundred and fifty dollars, you know what I mean, it's kind of like on a smaller scale, looking at the Save the Hospital funds would be to, to sort of enhance and, um, uh, you know, take the experts in the field and see where they're identifying where, like, these needs are and what, you know, where that money.
So, so my question is, if we ever decided not saying we're gonna or not to, to do something with some of that Save the Hospital money, could we earmark that money just for this?
You could even just create a whole new fund.
Just for healthcare, like, one of the things that I said in private was that, for me, and I'm only one of seven, and then there's also three commissioners, this takes a, a super majority for us to move forward with anything like that, so I'm only speaking for myself, but I would want to make sure that it's only for that, again, as a, as a firefighter, and, and, you know, EMS, you know, all the things I've been involved in, like, I think it's all the other things that are funded our day, but this Save the Hospital money specifically has to be for, in my, in my mind, specifically for the wellness of the community.
And that's what would be identified through, you know, eventually a fund agreement, but, yeah, for now, just the way that this fund exists, the Wellness Fund, that is what it's for, and that's what that money is earmarked for, and can only be spent for those things, like, this committee wouldn't even see any applications that don't have to do with, with those things, yes.
What do you think, Bruce? You're the hospital guy.
Well, I, you know, I started this campaign a long time ago.
Right.
Uh, and it seems like we're shifted a little bit from where we originally had talked, but, uh, no, anytime we can take county monies and, and help the betterment of the county, that's, that's the way to go.
Well, and these are community foundation. Yeah, this is no fun. Yes, yes. Definitely, and I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Garner. So, just to kind of like, give a little preview to this, I spoke with Jim about, um, well, with several of you spoken to, just accolades Jim, making an effort to try to get more training done and training within our community, um, and within our current workforce, but one of the things he wanted to do was give a premium to those that are going to be doing the training. And of course, what I came back and said was, well, that's why we have a range, that's why in our salary ordinance we do a range. And he said, well, what about the people that are at the top of the range? And so um, he only wants to do a fifty cents premium for those that are, you know, are delivering the training, and I, the commissioners were in favor of it today. And so I feel like that is a legitimate reason to raise his salary ordinance by fifty cents, um, for, you know, for that range, so he has that latitude to do that. Obviously, not to give everybody else, you know, per se, but, you know, at least make the room for that, so he can give that incentive for them.
So we all do that. We would end up, you know, like, a lot more in-house training.
Yeah.
Everything's over here, yeah, and so right there's.
Yeah. And for the council's knowledge too, Jim also did attain his, uh, PI, which is a, the instructor level where he can deliver that, uh, EM, well, paramedic down, EMS training.
So if you approve this, don't amend the salary ordinance in your motion, just approve the fifty cent per hour for trainers, because if you approve what the sheriff is wanting, you're gonna have to amend it again. So just approve the fifty cents per hour.
How many trainers are there gonna be? Just two, okay, there's two.
And it's, it'd be based on a forty-hour week or, or?
Forty-eight hour.
Forty-eight hour week.
I had, I'm not asking for additional funding, I have the funding, I just need. The approval to delegate.
Right.
I'd like that, but.
Yeah, I will, I will make the motion that we increase the salary fifty cents an hour for the two trainers, one paramedic and one EMT, and add to the salary ordinance as, as we can.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
Now, are we limited to what we can talk to our director about?
As long as it's fast, he's got dinner on the, on the stove.
Just a quick question, how does our income or our collections look for this fiscal year?
Gaining.
Uh, they're gaining. So, eh, when I talked to you earlier, you said that, uh, you went from like forty thousand a month collections to seventy-nine thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going up every month now.
So I'm just an old farm boy. But forty thousand a month times twelve, that's a half a million dollars real close. And we need that, and I, I encourage you to stay after it, because.
Be nice to get back.
My goal is where we were.
Even a more.
The three hundred thousand instead of.
How are you still using the service?
Yeah, we found a way to work within their service right now, they've got a month to improve it with bringing Kelly into the pictures, you're going backdating back log, what they're saying was missing. So playing their way for a month, if it doesn't work, I'm also looking at other avenues.
Good.
That's not one of those things that I'm gonna give up on. I designed that question to be an ad voice.
Yeah.
It wasn't an ad voice.
It wasn't, and I, I just, I can't thank you enough.
Would, would it be beneficial maybe to go back, I'm just, you don't need to answer me now, but maybe think about it. If this collection service is not working effectively, if you feel it's not working effectively, what the cost difference ratio would be is if we hired our own collection person for your, for your be granted, am I wrong?
That, no, that is in the, one of the avenues I was looking.
That's my point, if it would be cheaper to have our own, have, you have your own collection person versus, versus paying somebody a percentage to collect our money, county, county of money.
Right now, it's, it's easier if we can work within our system and raise what they're making, supposedly making for us.
If they would do it right.
If they were right.
Well, that's my point, definitely, they're not doing it right, so, right.
Three other services that have a single issue with that. Uh, but we said one of the avenues where they could have maybe a different building company, uh.
Maybe we can get to now, something in mind too.
They've got a month to show.
Okay.
The transfers we've done, there shouldn't be a real quick jump.
Right.
Did you, were you considering maybe a, 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 just a, a unit for just transferred?
We have one.
You do, okay.
We have one. That's what the, 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 the training officer is not to do, is train the.
Because that should make us some bucks.
You did. Fifty something, fifty, fifty-eight transfers this month. So they're coming from Winhamac Hospital.
This month, you mean, as of today? What if they ever?
As of last meeting to now, we've done fifty-eight. Well, we went from only being able to take ten percent of the hospital transfers in the old administration, so.
We have not turned down a transfer, as a matter of fact, I'm coming and then did one the other night to go analyst to St. Joe.
What is the average cost of county trip bill for transfer?
Uh, depends on if it's ALS or BLS, BLS is usually right around five hundred dollars. Uh, cost, uh, I figured out one thirty-three, a do- hundred thirty-three dollars an hour. Okay, the crew, the maintenance costs.
And how's that compared to, how does that compare to the billing of a private, uh, transfer?
In a way, they're on the same.
About the same. So you're, you're competitive then, I guess is why I'm asking that.
Most of private services lately have been dropping off. Uh, Superior has pulled out of the area completely.
Don't help.
Triple, uh, try, try county, county has restricted what they're doing here, uh, they're just running basic. Now, this runs out of. Northwest Hospital, their transfer truck has been committed to town, Porter County, and we've been working Northwest, getting our trucks for truck up and up.
There's been a trend in Indiana from, I, I've seen with other auditors in Indiana where, uh, over the years, we, they've gone from county to private, but now we're going from private back to county.
One other thing.
Ask Tommy to that. Justin is.
Yeah.
As far as the skill board is concerned, um, we had discussed talking with you and Jim Rendandis about what we can do through skill, eh, do, do you have the time to, to assist us with that?
Yeah, I, I told Jim, uh, probably about three weeks ago when he called me.
We don't always get the trickle-down effect, so I'm, I'm asking.
Set it up. Let me know after four, and I'll be.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
First, I made a sound. First off in the.
I think the part, the part thing could have been faster, but. Some of you already have it?
We have it. I don't have one, is it?
Asking for more money, I promise.
But you are asking to give somebody a raise.
Well, so we actually did this back in, what, July?
You're welcome.
August, it just never went through the paperwork for it to come out with the initial salary ordinance. We talked about it, so when we did our little salary ordinance workshop, this is what we had wanted to do, but we just didn't.
It's all right, it's all right.
We just didn't, we didn't, we didn't follow through, so ultimately, we just want to move some money around. Nate is here. You don't know him, he's our warden, he is way better at explaining this than I am, so I'm just gonna shut up and let him talk.
Hello, everyone, um. Yeah, about six months ago approximately, we had talked about kind of restructuring with the pay raise, kind of some of the things we're doing at the jail. And one of those was essentially, I'm gonna call it flip-flopping, but the numbers have to be explained, so we were gonna flip-flop a jail officer, the least senior jail officer, and call that an entry-level position. And we were gonna give that twenty-one dollars and ten cents an hour rate to the cook who does absolutely almost everything that a jail officer does. So we started running the numbers. She works an eighty-hour work week, a jail officer works eighty-four hours.
Eighty-hour bi-week.
Or, sorry, sorry, eighty-hour HP.
We keep her there all four.
So she works, uh, eighty hours every two weeks, uh, and jail officer works eighty-four hours, so if you kind of look here, um, there, her salary currently is seven, thirty-seven thousand, eighty-eight dollars, that is not including her longevity, she does receive five hundred, but from my understanding, that comes from a different. So if you took her hourly rate at twenty-one-ten, multiplied that out through a eighty-hour pay period, that would be forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, that leaves two thousand, two hundred and five dollars that you then would transfer into the entry-level position, bringing that up to thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. That would make the entry-level position for the jail at seventeen ninety-nine, leaving her at the twenty-one-ten, not including the longevity pay. And the reason, there was two reasons, we felt that Deb deserved that, she deserved to be paid exactly what a jail officer would make. And two, it kind of gives the individuals who have put those four or five years in, the appreciation for someone coming in and not making what they make day one. That position for the reentry would strictly be a seniority position. Somebody who leaves, quits, goes to a different job, whatever the situation is, the individual that we would hire to replace them would then enter that reentry position, or sorry, that entry, but, eh, entry-level position. So it's kind of a, a reward system for them staying longer to slowly gradually get them out to that full pace.
So we currently don't have a range on those two?
No.
Positions?
You don't. You're getting better, though, I mean, we have a range on a lot of things.
I thought we put ranges on everything.
No.
I mean, here, here's the thing, now this, you know, I'll be the devil's advocate here, because I've been sitting in this seat the longest. Um, you know, one of the things we run into is every department wants to give their people a raise, this is almost a, kind of twenty percent raise for somebody. Everybody wants to give their people a twenty cent raise, and the worst thing that happens after something like this is the door starts getting knocked on, everybody else wants to give their people. Everybody else wants to give their people a raise, cause they've been around for a long time and they do the same work as a jailer, well, you know. Right, Don, I mean, you were on the council before and and went through that. Um.
Well, I think I I don't disagree, I think everybody does wanna give the people a raise, I think here the issue of Deb has been there a very long time.
How long?
She's what, eight years?
I believe eight years.
Um, she's been around for, you know, forever, and she's now making less than the kids that are coming in as our new jailers and everything.
Well, you said she does the same thing as a jailer, though, I mean, she does it, so you're saying she's a turnkey also?
We don't have a female there, she's been trained on how to strip search a female, she's helped with the booking process. She's done everything that we have asked her to do anymore.
And again, I think they're what they're doing is not asking for more, they're just.
I'm not asking for any more. And essentially.
But she's making more money, though.
She personally.
That's what I mean, so I I'm not worried about the. Deal with that.
We're making the re and the entry level position then would be a tad lower than what they would normally start as a full time jailer. So instead of coming.
So we have a range for jailer now. So when you say that, you say that, like, there isn't a range, so like, the only thing we need to do is make a range then, because. Cause here's my experience, if we raise this, she quits. You hire somebody else. And I'm not kidding, and 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 as soon as they go through their probationary period, then they're at the top pay, I'm just saying, I'm. That's how every department has done it since I've been involved in county government, so you know, I think. That was another reason, I mean, even with the range, I mean, most of the time, all the employees are all at the top range after a certain period anyways, but. I think that if we do do something like this, this these positions need to have a range then.
And we do, I'm sorry, we do have a range on the part time jailer staff. Those are, those have been under the ranges, but these we haven't, yeah, they do a three phase.
Correct.
Right, so they do a three phase pay scale as part time. Um, full time has just been, this is what it's been, I mean, in my whole, like, six months I've been around at least, but. I mean, so I don't know, you know, that's something we can do in the future if you'd like us to. Right now, we're just trying to fix what we thought we had fixed.
So just so you're aware, Mr. Pearson, there hasn't been any hire since I've been there for eight, nine years. That hasn't been an employee of the Sheriff's Office. The process is an individual starts at the part time rate. When they start, I don't, I apologize, I don't know exactly what it is today, it's a ten percent rate, ten percent raise, I think it starts in fifteen something. So these individuals that are getting hired are starting at fifteen dollars. They are slowly working their way up into these full time positions, I don't hire individuals off the street, they're not trained. That that's why we have that process, so I'm not saying it's a range, but it is a process.
Well, you know, I I believe in farming from the inside, I mean, that's that's always been something we've done in our sheriff's department and. A lot of other sheriff departments do the same thing, I like that idea. Um, like I said, I just. You have to understand where I'm sitting. Every other employee is gonna be staring me down when I walk out of this uh of this room, because you know, we just gave one person a raise.
Another position.
I don't know how that helps the individual person at all. The other, the other individual person that comes to me and says, you know, I work for Tom Schouten and I wanna, you know, I wanna raise now too, you know, I I've been here for eight years, I'm not saying. I'm just, Tom's right in front of me, so I'm just.
I mean, what I'm, what I'm trying to grasp is, you have, you have the money, you just wanna move some stuff. We're not, we're not giving anybody a raise. So we're giving money, they're giving a raise, and within their own budget. Um, and if another department wants to do the same thing and rearrange their budget to shuffle pay raises, they could come before us too.
But we are giving a raise.
Well, that's what it opens the door up. We can afford to do that.
It's not extra money we're giving, it's money they already.
So you're saying the military department says we can do something with our, within our budget to give this person a raise.
We did that this morning, actually, with the. Turning paramedics into drivers.
Yeah.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, it's no secret, Stark County is very underpaid anyway. And employer retention, and I get it, I mean, everything's a Pandora's box, everything we do in county government, guys, I know there's a lot of people criticized, but. There are, I mean, these guys are both sides, you're right, there are a lot of issues with this, but the fact is, you need to retain employees, and somebody's been. Been nine years, and they're making seventeen bucks an hour, I think if that department can do something to retain somebody of that caliber.
If if we do do it, we should still, we should still create a range.
Well, and I'm telling you too, like, this is a sixty eight hundred dollar raise, raise in one year, I mean, I'm just saying, that's a lot, I mean, you know, I. Same.
With her versatility, wouldn't it be as easy as changing her job description and? And uh looking at it from that direction.
Well, then they'd be out without a cook.
She does, I mean, she does cook, she handles the kitchen, she is available to them, she does all the ordering, she is, I mean, honestly. I don't know, yeah, it'd be really amazing anyways. And with the length of time she's worked and the loyalty and just, I mean, this is.
What you talked about earlier. You talked about earlier, she does act in times as. If you need a female officer, if you need a female officer to handle another female. She's trained and qualified for that, it's what I'm asking, she's legal and trained and qualified to to handle that position. How often does she do that?
Not frequently, we try to have a female on staff, but there's always, there's always the what ifs.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
And I do wanna brush something real quick, what Mark brought up about that, because I I was watching, because I was texting you guys during the meeting, but. Um. The EMS position was a downgrade, it went from paramedic down to EMS driver, so it was, it wasn't the same thing, they're gonna get paid less.
It's it's still, of course, a reallocation of. You already designated funds, they're just. Instead of. The brand new person.
Oh, I like it, I'm always saying do it within your budget. Employee a twenty percent raise.
I personally feel like she's been.
Best thing to focus on in this situation is more making sure we we have the equity between someone who's invested their commitment. Long term to the county versus someone coming in fresh.
For one thing, the rate should be thirty seven thousand to forty three thousand. That's where, you know, I mean, I mean, obviously, the commissioners, you know, wanted to support the forty three eight eighty eight, um, so I mean, but I would say that. To hold them to the future thing, now that they're gonna hire somebody new, she quits tomorrow.
Is I understand you're.
Instead of changing it to forty three eight eighty eight.
It has to be arranged like that, because you can't, we're gonna get. Because of all of her experience and continuity, and she quits tomorrow, somebody that comes just off the street is not entitled.
Yeah.
To that whole way, they should go back.
I I'm okay with anything, I I don't necessarily know that thirty seven. Is a great starting point, to be fair, I think.
Well, she's she's working at that.
She served a hundred and six thousand years last year.
I'm not disputing any of that, I'm just saying.
Well, the way you said it was she's a cook, she's very valuable.
The position is the cook, I'm not, I'm being valuing. Representing of, you know, the hundreds of people that work for the county.
Understand completely, but my job is to say what she does.
Where you guys start at now, when you start?
For the cook position?
No, for the jail.
For the jail officers, their salary position is forty six thousand ninety three dollars for a start, but that's that's always what it is.
That's the full time jail, not the not the entry level that we're talking about.
So when they start, they start at fifteen.
They started part time starts this year at fifteen nineteen an hour.
Depends on the hours they work.
So what 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 is the? So there really, so there really is no raise.
If we do this, they would start at seventeen ninety nine.
They was, okay.
Correct.
Instead of starting, if you hired a jail, they would start at seventeen ninety nine, instead of twenty one ten.
Correct.
So you know, you started a new cook, it would start the same way, right?
That creates.
That position we need definitely, because there's only one full time position, that would be at twenty one ten.
That's starting point.
That's the starting point, that's that's whatever it is, that's the max.
To go up, oh, that's the max?
Yeah, but they they do have part time cooks in there, I.
Right.
It's the same rate, it's the same.
But I believe what you said, though, was that if she was to leave and you hired somebody with no experience, that we would be willing to downgrade that, that's why I'm saying.
I'm okay with that, I don't know that the starting point for the range is thirty seven.
Sheriff makes a decision, where he starts, man, I'm just saying, I want that to be in place.
I have no issue with that. A new employee coming in, that. That's not.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we got an eighteen dollar now, and we wanna take it to twenty one ten, okay? So. If if we do take that to twenty one ten. There has to be, there has to be a bottom range for the person coming right off the street.
Like seventeen ninety nine or? Whatever you said.
Or eighteen oh sevens, whatever.
Well, I think Don said seventeen ninety nine is what the jail.
The seventeen ninety nine would be, so if we can, you know, look up the cook. If we can do this for, you know, for the cook position, the seventeen ninety nine will be the the entry level.
Even though there's one person, you can still have the same range for a jailer, same range for the cook.
Same bottom number, I should say.
Yeah, never, that won't affect your house.
So you will always have one jail officer at the thirty nine. So if he wants, if we go with a starting thirty nine. But it'd be seven seventeen ninety nine an hour, right? For the starting.
Yeah.
For the range.
Correct, that's that's what.
That way it's consistent.
I mean, I think that I think that's still entry level.
I'm not saying we gotta hire with that, I know that. Dietary requirements and. Ordering, like, you know what I mean, like, it's more like hiring a manager.
I get, I get the concept.
It's a way bigger job than, I mean, it's it requires a lot more training than just, you know, so it it's difficult to say, sure, you know, we can say seventeen ninety nine. I would not take that job for seventeen ninety nine.
Well, I I don't even know why we're debating, I'm not suggesting that, all I'm saying is it needs to have a range.
Yeah.
You know, um, just in case. I mean, right now, she's willing to keep the job for thirty seven thousand, how do you know you can hire somebody for thirty seven?
She's actually.
To start, how do you know that? Yeah, she's working for that for now, right now.
Correct.
So the the thirty seven, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. So if we said seventeen ninety nine. At her eighty hour position, is the start again, thirty seven four nineteen.
Or you or use eighteen oh seven, I I see that you have that here, that's why Todd mentioned that. She's willing to work for that now, I'm just saying, if she quit and you hired somebody. Say they're fresh out of school, but they had a lot of restaurant background, you said, hey, I'm gonna put that person at position, you can start them out between that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the sheriff would make that decision, what I'm saying is she's working for that now, you might be able to hire somebody to start there. Like, how all of a sudden do we have to have a discussion of starting somebody at forty three also besides? You know.
And and then I don't, it doesn't bother me one way or another, we come up with a range, that doesn't bother me.
Just, we need to do that for all the positions, and it's just, this is a good time to do that, if we're gonna make a change.
So our part timer start at fifteen nineteen, they go up, so then the, I mean.
You know, put a bottom number and.
So I mean, can we just say if we need a bottom number, start at that eighteen oh seven that was gonna be this year anyways? Right, so start at thirty seven eighty eight, and then top would be, well, at this point, she's got forty three eight eighty.
I put it down as thirty seven forty.
Yeah, that was up at seventeen ninety nine an hour, right? Yeah, so.
It's weird that eight cents makes that much.
Yes, yeah.
So what do you mean?
That's a different hourly. Different hours work, one is eighty one one, that's why the seven six makes a difference.
I did it at seventeen ninety nine, are you not wanting to do it at seventeen ninety nine, or what do you want?
It's arbitrary, let's do that, you already did it, let's do that, yeah. Yeah.
So if you vote on this.
No, I I'm not sure you're gonna bring up new code.
Mr. Pearson.
Um, yes.
Sorry, Tony.
I was, I was gonna make a a motion, so I'm into the twenty twenty four salary ordinance and as presented, which reflects the updated. Salary of forty three eight eighty.
And the only question I, the only question I have, just so, just so I have clarity, if if the situation arises. Years from now, hopefully. Individual, we use they come in at seventeen ninety nine, if an individual.
I'm sorry, but I have a motion on the floor. Motion is there a second?
Reread the motion.
He's he's motioning to have it as read, he said, right?
Make a motion to amend the twenty twenty four salary ordinance as presented, which reflects the updated cook salary of forty three thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Have a motion?
Top pay.
Hold on, well, wait, you didn't say a raise, you're saying, you're just saying what the.
Thirty five, I mean, basically, yeah.
So we got the range entered in the motion.
There's a motion from Tony to do the range of uh thirty seven uh to the forty three. And make the change in the salary orders.
Cause that's, that's the only way we can do it.
Is that a second?
That that is a second, yes.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? So we'll sign this one.
Thank you.
The other thing that the sheriff had here is I I listened to the commissioner's meeting today. And instead of buying new cars, they found a deal on two used cars, and so I. I don't know how much Jack wants to tell you, but I, the commissioner's already approved.
Why am I getting set up here?
Makes so.
Thirty seven.
Up to forty six thousand, guys. It'll, you know, to sum this up, like, to not beat this to death, they have two places they buy cars from, they've been in great condition, these are the lowest, I, the commissioners. Spec, the lowest miles. Buying two cars for forty six thousand. I don't think it does, it doesn't get any, they're already uh ready for lighting. It doesn't get any better than that.
I don't know.
We needed the, I think we needed the approval for the.
So Dave, is there an action required by this board?
Yeah, if there is, I'll make that motion, I'll second that motion, um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Is there any opposed? Thank you for that, Jack. Really, I'm appreciating guys trying to save a few bucks on the car.
Oh, yeah.
But still getting something to say, for sure.
No.
Just as long as they're not red. Um, the last thing is Mr. Shaw.
Forgot about your training. Yes.
Uh, this is pretty reasonable what Todd wants, I mean. Probably put it, let him off, well, he always make everybody come, but he just needed to move some money around, so he has money for his training. I'll make a motion that we make the transfer. From Phil Louvre Tire of a hundred dollars. To. Whatever, one three oh one zero zero point zero zero, like what it is, but it must be. You didn't put down what the fund did, what the fund was.
Well, it's for uh, it's for the surveyor.
What's the phone call, so I can finish my motion?
Like, where are you taking it from?
When I'm putting it to you, you mean? Oh, it's it's going to a uh.
Think we decided training, right?
It's a training project.
Okay, well, I did cite the number, though, just to make sure. County Surveyor Association Fund of a hundred dollars.
Are you gonna buy chains of bars and pop with it? Do you wanna come, you're more than welcome.
Is that a second, Tony?
It is.
I have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. There any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, there's Beaver Dam on twenty three, just uh, just south of one fifty.
Be careful, those beavers are protected now, too.
Are they fifty west? Right before you get there, on the.
No, American Indian. Um, yes, let's just go around the room real quick before we look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't have anything at this time. I was just wondering how much is gonna save the hospital fund?
Six million.
Yeah, it adds in a hundred thousand dollars in tree.
You wanna go all right?
Okay, why, why, why am we at Mark, before we go down, Ken, Ken, just the commissioners for one minute? I couldn't hear on the meeting, but what did you guys do at this pulse point? Wait until the dispatch and everybody.
Yeah, we already saw more of the, the first responders and.
I couldn't hear that part, I figured that. Yeah, cause it's gonna rely on everybody downloading the app. Yeah.
I left some things out, great of you to look at, two different handouts again on that circuit breaker tax relief. There's, um, Marion County broke it down, it's like this nice little user-friendly version, but I also attached a copy of Stinkers County's app. So, not, not letting that one die.
No, uh, the other thing is, uh, you also were talking to the guy from the, um, public defenders.
Yeah, isn't he gonna come next month? Yeah.
I was gonna ask what everybody thought about coming in at four to accommodate our guest, to give a little bit more time for him, and I just, this time of year with the weather, I don't wanna push Justin and have him to, I mean, I know he always says it's okay and everything else, but I'd like to ask the council just for next month, if we can do it at four to accommodate, um, our presentation from this gentleman.
I can.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I'm fine.
It's just dark and slick and cold.
Last other thing I left out for everybody, I, I said I would go through, um, using Google searches and look for codes of ethics that different municipalities or government entities have adopted, and, um, one is from Hobart and the other is from Porter County. So, um, I'm in a, I'm just getting them out, I'm trying to remember to get on the agenda this time. Whether we wanna do something.
You know what, and I'd like to tag onto that for the next meeting too, though, because I will say, I spoke to a couple of employees of Stark County. And they said, hey, I heard in your meeting, your discussion about maybe limiting um, people that have worked for the county or been elected officials on working for a private entity after. Um, and they gave me a good reason, both of them gave me a good argument as to why, like, if they were retiring. And they wanted to work, like, let's say, for example, um, uh, you know, they were working in the field of contractors, and they worked for, went to work for a contractor after they worked for the county. Um, they felt that that was pretty unfair, and that would kind of violate their rights too, and so, now, what I do feel like, though, is, and I'm just gonna throw this out there for food for thought. Part of this was also brought up because of my, I, I think it's seen as involvement, although I've been um, on behalf of the commissioners, working more with the solar companies quite a bit. I would personally be willing to sign something for two years, whatever. Think about it, you know, I, since, for the council at least, because I feel like a lot of that was addressed probably to what I've got going on. Um, and, you know, and working a lot more with the solar companies, and so I do sympathize, once the employees brought that up to me, that, that is a little unfair for them, especially if they retire, and, and they wanna work, you know, for somebody.
Well, you know, I, I would look at it more in the context of people, of people that contract, or that we fund, with the economic development.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
The last two have went into the.
They left, they didn't retire, they did lateral transfer up there.
Right, I'm thinking like term out, or if they were an employee, I mean, or even if they were an employee, I mean, gosh, if they got better offer, I mean, I don't know. I, I just, I, I don't know if that's.
The only profession that I know that's not allowed to do it is the legal profession, because we help people access the justice system, so the courts and the legislature don't wanna put those limits there. However, I, I'm sure I can't think of another profession that couldn't do it if they wanted to, doctors do it every single day.
They just, interesting, they just changed that from last sentence for positions, I thought that was weird, but you guys all got my email, right, like discussing like, you know, it can, you can probably be done like Cassie's biggest concern, they could probably be done with the Economic Development Foundation, you just have to have that part of their funding discussion. You know, so if you guys wanna do that, I think that was probably the biggest piece, I think that's doable, because ultimately it is pulling the purse strings, I mean, you guys can decide whether that's advisable, but I just wanna make sure you got my email discussing, you know, each part of it. How you wanna do it, so.
Two people involved, the people that could direct, direct the business to the sort of people who want to train.
Hope it didn't not be stuff there, somewhat intermingled.
Right.
Because of the, the concerns were raised by, by the same incident.
Right, but I will say, though, in my case, because I was involved in the EDA, the, the, the ordinance, the, uh, the road use agreement, like all those, I was there for it. I'm willing to personally do that, and I'll just state that, and if, you know, if we do come up with something, I'm willing to you know, stand with me on that, in fairness, like, I could see why people would be bothered by that, but, um, so.
What solar company did Mrs. Dan go and work for?
What's that?
Someone going to work for a solar company?
They also direct, my position is, is that we can't have people in, in a position to guide in a certain direction, and then all of a sudden they get hired by those people.
Did this last one get hired by?
They're an advocacy.
Yeah. Center for Energy Education. Emails from her already. It's, yeah, she's, she works for the Center for Energy Education, based out of Roanoke Rapids, North Carolina.
Do you know?
I think she was probably.
The, the, well, yeah, because the message I got was um, an upcoming works show in Fort County. Um, to discuss before the agenda. Now, discussion on.
Works for the old television. Um, it, solar is a topic of conversation within this agenda.
Yes.
Solar in communities, and economic opportunities.
Well, I mean, at this point, she's got, there is no agreement, so she's got ready to work, she's. So now, just, I wanna, I wanna be clear, because I mean, everyone knows I'm quiet, I'm so, I ain't gonna work for nobody. But, um, because as elected officials, we, I mean, there's nothing like that, and as employees of the county. This is basically the one reason we have that kind of powers, if we fund them, is that.
Exactly.
My right to understand that.
Yeah, elected official, definitely, because there, you can't, I mean, I mean, I would sign the paper like they do, just out of the sure, just because, I mean.
Best thing is, to really force them.
But, yeah, because, because if you lose your.
What happened with the fair, that they don't need our money anymore, because now they're being funded by leisure solar, so doesn't, though, don't. Well, that building is. It's a lot of funding.
Yes, it is.
So it's a lot of funding. So anyway, um, they, the, the Economic Development Foundation, and they'll probably tell us they don't want our money.
Well, I will say, you know, I, I didn't bring that, I meant to bring this up, is they, um, uh, Dave actually, um, Paul had said this, that if, if we decided to, how did they work that? It was about our funding with, um, with the Economic Development Foundation, that RMC would not be giving money to Stark County anymore, if we didn't support the foundation, that's what he said, right? Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, that's a wonderful note to end the meeting on.
A note from Rachel, you got a hostage situation.
Yes.
Um, can I say something about the fifty-five, five exemption, I'm not trying to, um, discourage you from doing it, I'm just, this is just merely education. So, and you might already know this, but when we give out exemptions, because this exemption is something that state legislators said, okay, you know, if the council wants to do it, that's fine. They're basically pushing it over to you guys to either make the public mad or not mad at you. So, they do that with a lot of stuff, um. When you give an exemption, that brings down our net assessed values. So what does that mean? That means our tax rates go up. So essentially, you are given an exemption for whoever, you know, you wanna put it for, but you are increasing the tax rates for everybody else in that year.
I think ultimately, that's one of the things we could talk about, parking in solar. Seriously, I mean, you know, there are some things that I think ultimately from solar that we can get creative about.
Exemptions are always like give and take thing, you know, if net assessed value goes down, tax rates go up to support whatever budget was turned in.
Then we gotta look, cut some other tax within that to bring it down.
Cut the county general budget, like.
Idea for that, though. Because you said that the the mortgage exemption is gone, but it went to the homestead.
Yes. Yes.
Nobody has to file any paperwork, that automatic will happen.
For the mortgage going away, and it, but that is correct. No, you don't have to file paperwork, for that instance.
Okay, unless you get a new homestead, then you still have to file your homestead. Alright. Have a motion, a second, all those in favor, please say aye.